Good afternoon and welcome to the Burlington City Council Candidate Forum, conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership's Government Relations Committee. My name is Todd Chelf, I am the General Counsel at Great River Health, and I'll be your moderator for this afternoon's event. Our timekeeper is Stephen Brody with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and fairness to other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Stephen's signal and stop your responses when time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions, to which each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Each candidate will also have 60 seconds to introduce themselves, and at the end of the questions, each candidate will have 60 seconds for closing remarks. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. We will not be taking questions from the audience at this forum. Candidates are seated in alphabetical order. To my right is Robert Kreitzer, Bill Moppen, Tim Scott, and Kay Weiss. Two candidates could not be with us, Travis Ingram and Jennifer Cleaver-Kirkman. Candidate Travis Ingram, as I said, was not available to join us this afternoon. He did provide the following statement. "Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Travis A. Ingram, and I am the owner and sole attorney of Ingram Law, PLLC. Unfortunately, I am not able to attend the Candidates' Forum due to prior obligations with my firm. Please feel free to follow Travis A. Ingram for Burlington City Council on Facebook to learn more about my candidacy, including issues that I believe have led to disappointment among many of us citizens over the past several years. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to earning your support." Candidate Jennifer Cleaver-Kirkman was also not available to join us this afternoon, and she provided the following statement. "Good afternoon. Regrettably, I am unable to attend today's forum. I will be litigating for the best interests of a child in a hearing that has been on the court's calendar for months now. A key element of my platform is transparent communication. For any questions, concerns, or comments, please contact me through my Cleaver-Kirkman for City Council Facebook page or email me. Good luck to all my fellow candidates. May the best representation to serve the city's interests rise to the top." With that, let's start by having you introduce yourselves and share why you're running for a seat on the City Council. Mr. Kreitzer.
My name is Robert Kreitzer, and I am currently serving on the Burlington City Council. I would like to take this moment to thank all the people who love and support the Burlington community. You are the reason that Burlington is a great place to live, work, play, and retire. I'd like to add that on there someday. I believe that we're on the rise, we're in the midst of development and progress, there's more investment than ever before, and we're experiencing a renaissance of music, art, poetry, and entertainment. When I ran for City Council four years ago, people told me they wanted a place to live, a place to work, and something to do, and I think that we've been checking those boxes. I'd love to take credit for all of it, or even some of it, but I don't do it, staff does, and the partnership does, and there's a lot of people that are pulling for Burlington that are doing all the hard work. That being said, I feel like I represent you better than anyone else. I care about the things you care about, and I want the same things you want. I understand how local government works, and why we do some things and not others. And it's neither simple or as complicated as you think."
Thank you, Mr. Kreitzer. Mr. Moppen.
My name is Bill Moppen. I'm a lifelong resident here in Burlington, born and raised. My wife and I, and we have a daughter that's, she's 26 and married in a way. I ran for City Council four years ago because I love this city, and I love what we can do here. I decided to run again because I see that we have some tough decisions ahead of us. There's a lot of things going on at the state level, and I would like to be part of making those decisions and being there to help the city that I love. I'm currently a social studies teacher out at Notre Dame after spending 27 years as an administrator at different school districts around southeast Iowa, mainly Fort Madison, and then the last nine years at Notre Dame. So I just, I really appreciate everybody doing this, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, my name's Tim Scott. I'm married to the same woman for 43 years. I've got four kids, one deceased, and I've got seven grandchildren, and they mean everything to me. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running for council, because they mean so much to me. I'd like to do everything I can to make their life better, as well as everybody else in the community. This is, I graduated, I was born and raised here, graduated from BHS. I went to, I went to the Air Force, I got credits from the Community College of the Air Force, I went to SEC, and I went to Wichita State University. I said I spent most of my life here, other than the time that I was in the service, and a time I got transferred with Montgomery Ward's to Wichita, Kansas, where I met my wife. So it wasn't a bad transfer. You've seen me up here before, this is my sixth time sitting at this table. I won four of those, I lost the one, and I'm very proud of what I was able to accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Weiss.
Some of you know me as the retired director of the Burlington Library. I moved here 35 years ago, so I'm a relative newcomer. I've restored three historic houses here in Burlington, and today I would say volunteering is my full-time job. I work with the Chamber, NAPI, the Heritage Trust, the Historical Society, the library, my church, a plethora of organizations. I've stayed in Burlington because I think the future for Burlington is very bright, and I want, like Bill said, I want to be part of the effort to get the state to change some of its attitudes toward the cities.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Our first question is this: Most candidates for local office have a pet project or issue of primary interests that compelled them to run for office. What is yours? Start with you, Mr. Scott.
A pet project?
Or issue.
No, really, I don't have any, because this job is what you make of it. When I got, when I first got on the council, I had no idea what direction I was going to go, other than to support the council and the city, and I ended up taking on much more than what was necessary for a council member. One of the things, one of the first things we done was to redevelop the Statue of Liberty, and we're back in that mode again. We took an old statue, we got her rebuilt, and put her on a pedestal, and had her on the riverfront for the last 20 years. Another thing that I had done was I got involved with the Burlington International Games, and it was just by happenstance that I had to go to Burlington, Ontario with the Chamber of Commerce for a financial reason, and I run into some folks that were running the Burlington International Games, and we ended up being involved for six years. We took over 600 kids to Canada and Vermont, and we hosted about 250, 300 kids from Ontario and Vermont at one of the games here. It was something that we took on myself, and it was one of those, and one of many, but most proud of those two.
Mr. Kreitzer.
As far as pet projects, I don't have anything specific. There are some things that I thought that, as a council, we needed to tackle, and we couldn't continue to kick the can down the road. Cascade Bridge would be an example of that. As far as pet peeves, people speeding school zones is my pet peeve, and we're trying to do something about that. When I ran four years ago, there was violence and crime in Burlington, and DeMarcus Chu was murdered a few blocks north of my home, and that kind of prompted a response out of me, and that's why I became involved, and I participated in the forums, and then we asked for help from the FBI and the Police Department, started the pop units, and got a lot of guns off the streets and took care of violence. So some of the things that I started out doing are on their way to being resolved. And then, in the future, I just want the best Burlington we can have. I just, I love that the downtown's growing, I love that there's development, I want to promote that. I like that the BRE is doing a great job with the auditorium, I love that the Capitol Theater's experiencing some growth, and we've got a new downtown that we need to help support. So really, my pet projects are just what you guys asked me for and how to help. I might want to shout out the library, too. They're a very important resource for Burlington.
Ms. Weiss.
I'm really concerned because I believe Burlington's at a crossroads. This past spring, when the legislature passed the bill, which was signed by Governor Reynolds, that negated the will of thousands of Iowa voters, who in the past have voted to tax themselves for libraries and civic centers, and bands, and symphonies, and museums, and a lot of other things. But the bill that was passed folded these former levies into the general revenue tax, which is capped by law at $8.10 for each $1,000 of taxable valuation. Burlington stands to lose quite a bit of money if this continues to follow the plan of the legislature. That cap, $8.10, was passed in 1975, when ground beef or hamburger, whatever you want to call it, was $0.69 a pound, and bread was $0.39 a loaf. So we have some work to do.
Thank you. Mr. Moppen.
Well, I'm going to go along with Kay. I think House File 718, which was signed in May, puts us at a disadvantage. When you look at, when I joined council four years ago, we were talking about lowering the tax levy and building Cascade Bridge and doing all these great things while still lowering levy. We've had two years of property valuations going down. We, you know, the money we are bringing in constantly is shrinking. Right now, we're at 1543 for a levy. By 2029, we have to be down to $8.10. The quality of life issues that we have, that, you know, what we want to keep going with the library, with the auditorium, everything like that is all important. But we also have to think about fire, and we have to think about police, we have to think about roads, and so in this shrinking amount of money, what are we going to do to get the most out of our tax dollars for the citizens we have? So that's my, I don't know if it's a pet project, but it's a utmost concern.
Question number two. Every municipality has challenges in deciding how to address infrastructure needs and providing essential services: bridges, roads, sewer improvements, riverfront enhancements, staffing city services, and the list goes on and on. How should these needs, services, and projects be prioritized and addressed? We'll start with you, Mr. Moppen.
Okay. I believe the city government, the number one thing is to provide for its citizens, that being roads, police, and fire protection. We have to look at, there's going to be tough decisions we're going to make here in the next two, three years, on how we can continually find maybe different sources of revenue to keep these things going. But the number one concern is the infrastructure and fire and police protection. I don't want to lose anything else. I don't want to lose anything to the library, I don't want to lose anything to the parks, Cascade Bridge, or anything, but it's going to take a lot of hard decisions to make over the next few years and find out exactly where we are. And we may have to take a year and say, you know what, we're not going to do this project because we need to keep these things going. And those are going to be hard decisions. Some people will understand it, and others will not. And I think you have to be able to stand up here or sit up here and try to make those decisions and do what's best for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer.
I agree with Bill. It's infrastructure, it's health and public safety, so the police and fire departments are priority, infrastructure's priority, and like Kay and Bill said about the budget, we're basically being screwed by the state, I'm just going to say it. We are going to have to get creative in coming up with revenue streams that'll fund these things. The money's not going to be there, they're taking away the opportunity we had for home rule and to manage and govern ourselves, and they're taking money away from us, and they say that they're going to hand it back to us when it's appropriate, but I don't trust that it'll work that way, so we're going to have to figure out whether it's a franchise fee or something else to cover the costs of running a city. It's not going to be easy, and I don't want to cut anybody's departments, I don't want to cut the library, I don't want to cut the parks, I don't want to handcuff anybody and tie their hands and keep them from doing their job. Everything we're doing right now, to me, is a necessity, and when you start taking away from that, we're going to lose what makes Burlington great. So Kay and Bill are right, I'll just end it with that.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss.
I would like, as a member of the council, to try to work collaboratively with other city councils around the state, because our city is not the only city that is facing these kind of draconian cuts, and I think as council members, we need to be exploring options with other cities as well as our own city. And I have to say that I think lifelong learning and the opportunities that libraries provide for teaching kids literacy skills and understanding the difference between rumors and fact is an important part of our national infrastructure. An educated populace is what makes our democracy work.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Prioritizing the needs is an annual responsibility of the council, we just have to address it as it comes up, and every year, the priorities are going to change, are going to be a little different, where the money's coming from is going to be different. And every council has experienced it time and time and time again. The state took away the machinery and equipment tax on one of the first councils that I served on, and it was a challenge, but we were able to overcome it and proceed and work on. And I think we'll see the same thing here. It's up to the councils to be, council to be involved with the League of Cities and to communicate often with those in elected office at the state and federal level. Let them know, hey, you guys screwed up. You need to give some back, or you need to leave us alone, let us run our business.
Thank you. Our third question is, in your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing the city of Burlington, and what would you like to see as the council's response to that need? We'll start with Ms. Weiss.
I just said that. I think the greatest issue is the state meddling in cities affairs, and I think the city councils across the state need to work collaboratively to try to affect change at the city level or at the state level. It doesn't need to stay that way. They've changed the law once, they can change it again. Or they can raise the cap, because $8.10 in 1975 is worth over $46 today.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
I'm a big proponent of taking on our neighborhoods, and I've seen more and more and more houses and buildings and businesses, business buildings, that have gone in either abandoned or deteriorating at a rather rapid rate. I know it's definitely a challenge for the city and for our tax dollars. I think it's something that we need to address. One house in the neighborhood starts to deteriorate, and everybody else gives up on their properties. And by the same token, when you improve a property, then the properties around them start to improve. So I think, I'd really want to take a hard look at that, and then, and also, the way we enforce the use of our right-of-ways, of the city right-of-ways. In so many neighborhoods, it just looks trashy with boats and trailers and trucks and cars and everything else parked here and there, all over the city right-of-way, instead of being used what they're supposed to be used for. And that's for utilities, sewer, water, gas, electric, cable TV, signage, and the like. It's not for private individuals to use to promote their business or their garage sales.
Mr. Moppen.
Yeah, we can't just sit up here and talk about things. When we're talking about House File 718, we have to look for solutions on how we're going to do this, but we also, if it doesn't change, we have to plan. We have to plan ahead in looking at how we're going to maintain all these services with the dollars that we are allowed to keep. It's our job to find solutions. We can sit up here and we can say, oh, woe is me, and I wish we could do this, or I wish we could do that, but if we don't have the money, we have to plan ahead of time. And I think that's why the budget season's so important. This is coming, you know, we're five years out to 2029. We have to start planning now or doing something now, because it gets to 2028, and we don't have a clue, we don't have a process, we haven't planned ahead, we're not going to be doing our citizens justice.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer.
Well, it sounds like we all agree that the budget is a concern. Also, I wanted to point out that we have a local option sales tax that the state is looking at taking away from us next year, so that one cent sales tax that we use to, for property tax relief that we use to fund the police and fire departments could also be in state control, and then even communities that don't currently participate in that local option sales tax might have access to the funds that we helped put in there. So we do need to communicate with the state and let them know that they're kind of tying our hands. The other issue I would say is big is just communication and transparency. I would say the general public doesn't understand how small government works, they don't understand why we make the decisions we do, they don't understand what powers we do and don't have, and why we get to the result that we get to. I do my best to communicate that, but folks don't always understand or aren't receptive to it, so I believe that if we could find a way, we do have the Citizens Academy, we have the Police Academy, Fire Academy, it's a way for us to communicate to the people of Burlington how this all works, but we need participation from the people of Burlington to make this happen, so that the people sitting in the audience understand, the people at home need to understand, too. So I'd like to get more community involvement, and I think that would help everybody in the long run.
Thank you. Question number four. Please discuss your community involvement, volunteerism, or previous elected office experience. With that experience, why are you interested in elected office at this time? Start with you, Mr. Kreitzer.
As far as community involvement and volunteering, I think the first thing I ever volunteered for was when I raised my hand and joined the Iowa National Guard. I did that for six years. I worked for Walmart stores for 20 years before I retired. While I was with them, I helped captain the team for Relay for Life, and we walked for cancer every year, and I think we did the math, in seven years, I walked 135 miles. I would walk for 12 hours straight, and I wouldn't stop, because it was my way of walking with my mom, who I lost to breast cancer when I was little, and I said that every mile I walked with her, it was a mile I was stealing back. Currently, my biggest volunteer thing is I'm the captain of Team Jesse. If you guys know Jesse Petty, he's the shoe shine at F&amp;M Bank, and every year since 2018, I've loaded him up at least twice a year into a pony cart, and I pull him on 5Ks, we've done a couple 10Ks, but I will pull him up Snake Alley and across the bridge and back. When I'm doing that, I've convinced other people to volunteer with us, so now Team Jesse's a real thing, and we have four or five members, and we actually get together and pull them around, and it's a lot of fun. As far as boards and committees, BRE, I've helped with the Burlington Bees, I'm not on the Capitol Theater Board, but I've popped in there before, but I kind of see what everybody's doing and stay involved, whether I'm involved or not.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss.
I volunteer for the Historical Society, and the Heritage Trust, and the library, and DPI, and I was honored this spring to be selected as an outstanding state volunteer by the State Main Street Program. Do I need to say about my past employment? I worked in four other public libraries before I came to Burlington, and also worked in the school library and the university library, so I know how to look things up.
Thank you. Mr. Moppen.
In the late 1980s, 1990, early 1980s, early 1990s, I was a member of the Hamilton Walters Marine Corps Detachment here in Burlington, and I was the first organizer of the Toys for Tots program here. In my world of education, we have set up Saturday schools for students that need extra help so that they succeed. We did that at Notre Dame for many years, still do it today. Also, I was a mentor for area principals, new principals coming out of school, did several in Fort Madison, Keokuk, and recently, I've been mentoring some teachers that are going back and getting their administrative degree and working with them.
Mr. Scott.
In the early 1980s, when I was a much younger person, I served on the school board. For about two years of a three-year term, I got transferred with Montgomery Ward's company I was working for at the time, to Wichita, Kansas at that time. I've been a Cub Scout leader and a Boy Scout leader. I served as a reserve police officer in the Burlington Police Department for seven or eight years, and I served four-year terms on the city council, six of those as mayor. Presently, I make projects for different organizations. I've made auto Leopold benches for the library, working on another project for a local group. And then the other thing that started doing here recently is we look for people in need, and a very good friend of mine, who happens to be sitting in the audience tonight, he and I go around and we look for people that are, their properties are a bit distressed, and we try to pitch in and do what we can, or get, talk to them and counsel them on how to get these, how to get this taken care of, and it's greatly rewarding, and I thank him for bringing me into his fold on that.
And then our fifth and final question. As an elected official, you will be looked on as an ambassador for the city of Burlington. In that role, what strength do you offer in promoting civility and the positive elements of the city? Mr. Kreitzer.
Well, I have a be-good, do-good philosophy, and I have a kindness-first approach. It's pretty hard to ruffle my feathers and get me stirred up to the point where I'm going to respond negatively. I will debate people online, and I still keep it civil. I think that in itself is an achievement. But I'm approachable. I don't know anybody that's wired up the way I am, as far as, you know, I'll just talk to a stranger, I'll tell people that, hey, that's a great smile, or I'll get a door for someone and chat with them. My friend Tim calls me a boomer magnet. If I'm delivering bread somewhere, people just come up and tell me how they feel about something politically, how they feel about something religiously, or just what's going on in their life in general, and they have no idea who I am. They have no idea I'm on council, I'm just approachable, and they start talking to me. As an ambassador to Burlington, when people talk to me, what I offer back is, hey, I'm from Burlington, have you been there? Or if they are from here, I'm like, hey, have you seen what we've got going on downtown? Have you seen this yet? Did you know that they're doing a comedy night? Did you know they're doing poetry? Did you hear the library? Did you hear the library just put a wheat paste mural up? Did you hear about the event downtown where they had the Jurassic Park thing? I promote Burlington by telling people what's going on and getting them involved. And it's amazing the response you get because a lot of times, people don't know this stuff is going on and they're glad that I told them.
Mr. Moppen?
I think the thing is that I love this city and I've been here my entire life. I think I show people that come in, back in my former, when I was a principal, and we'd have people come in and interview. They would see things that our own citizens don't see. They would come in and they'd say how it looks like a European village coming across the river with the different hills. So I like to point that out. I think we need to tell our citizens how great our city really is. And I think being an ambassador is just having that positive attitude and looking at our town for the great things it has, not the, oh, this should, could be better or that could be better. But bring to light the good things that we have here and how the people here, you know, pull together to do stuff. I mean, so many volunteer organizations and everything like that, we couldn't do half the stuff we do without that. Look at the playground out of Dankworth, you know, that's being done. Volunteerism and raising those kind of funds. So I think just being a positive influence, supporting the city, supporting our people, and, you know, we have a great place to live and just show that.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I would like to see us break down this major barrier that's been placed before the citizens of this country in every level of government that there is. And we were told time and time again when we sat on this council that we can't respond to the citizens if it's not on the agenda. My first term in office, we added an extra 45 minutes prior to the council meeting that people could come and talk to the council. And we had a back and forth, we had a dialogue, an actual dialogue, that we were able to communicate with our citizens. And then suddenly, some person placed upon the citizens of this country a roadblock. You shouldn't say that, you shouldn't talk about that, you're going to get sued, the city's going to get sued because you talked about an item that's not on the agenda. I don't think there's any more important thing in this, at this desk than to sit and listen to our citizens and to communicate with them. I had one council member say to me when I brought this up, maybe we don't want to have a dialogue. I had to leave. I had to leave the building. I've been known to have a little bit of a short fuse. My father was a kind, gentle man. You'd never met a kinder and gentle man. My mom was a badass. And I got mixed up, I got part of both of those. So the one thing I want to see us do is stake down that roadblock and I'm going to answer the people. When I get an email or when I get a phone call, I'm going to answer them. I'm a little disappointed about the way that has gone over the past couple of five years.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Weiss?
I think there are so many good things happening in Burlington and so much to celebrate that it's easy to be an ambassador for the city. We have great public-private partnerships. You mentioned the playground and the park. We've had murals that people have done. The library is supported by the friends of the library and the people who give donations. The parks get all kinds of tree donations as well as playground donations. We have a new flood wall because of grant monies. We've got the Jefferson Street Flood Medication Project is nearly done. And we have a hugely rich architectural heritage. So it's easy to be an ambassador for Burlington.
So we've now come to the end of the questions. You each will have 60 seconds to have a closing remarks. And in those closing remarks, please share with us what sets you apart from other candidates. We'll start with you, Mr. Moppen.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming today and setting this up. I think that sets me apart is I'm a realist and I'm a pragmatist. I look at the issues, I try to find answers, I try to find solutions. I just don't want to sit up here and whine about it. As Roosevelt said, you know, sitting and whining about a problem doesn't fix anything. So that part, I think I am, I've said no on this council. I have voted no on things. And I think that's important. I don't think we all need to get five to zero. And some things I have, I have been very strong about that I just, I could not support. So I think just being a realist is my major contribution.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I too want to thank the chamber for putting this on and for your assistance. And I would, I would encourage us to use the full time that we have and maybe allow citizens to come up and ask questions. I would like to do my very best to communicate. That's the first wall that I want to tear down. I saw somebody out there shaking their head, no. But I think it's, I think it's only fair that they, that citizens be able to ask questions of candidates.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
So what sets me apart? I'm built different. I don't know how to answer that. I, a lot of you met me when I was writing in The Hawkeye and I was writing a weekly opinion. And a lot of you know who I am and how I feel about most things in general. I'm probably the most transparent person you know. I don't keep a lot of secrets. I share what I know and hope that it'll help all of you do whatever it is you're doing in life. I'm not just here to be a council member, I'm here to be a friend of the community, I'm here to be a member of your family, I'm here to include you, to participate in whatever you're doing, whatever you feel, I'm feeling it, too. I get it. I think what makes me unique is the, where I came from and where I'm at now. When I came back to Burlington in 96, I ended up homeless. I finished my junior and senior year of high school on my own. I got my brother out of foster care and I've been running ever since. So thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss, you get the last word.
Thank you so much for having us out here today. I think that my biggest strength is that I'm a big-picture person. I'm not into micromanagement. I think the city has done a wonderful job of getting the financial house in order and city department heads know what they're doing. And I think I would look forward to working with the council to facilitate all kinds of opportunities for our community, looking for more public partnerships, looking for more dollars, looking for ways to collaborate with other cities. And I'd be honored if I were elected by the voters to work on combating the devastating changes that face our city ahead.
Thank you. Well, I would want to thank each of you for your interest in serving Burlington. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. I'd also like to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and its Government Relationship Committee for hosting this event. And I thank you to the city of Burlington for allowing us to use the council chambers. And thank you to those in the audience here and those who've been watching and are listening online for your interest in the city council primary election. Please vote for the candidates of your choice in the city of Burlington primary on Tuesday, October 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?